Okay.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
We're ready whenever you are.
Okay. Okay, good afternoon, council, senior staff. I see that we do indeed have quorum. I call this meeting into session. Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, December 13th. And I call on councillor Kerr to be the land recognition statement. Councillor?
We begin this meeting by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Honadashoni and Anishinaabe peoples, many of whom continue to live and work here today. This territory is covered by the Upper Canada Treaties and is within the land protected by the Dish with One Spoon Wampum Agreement. Today, this gathering place is home to many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples, and acknowledging reminds us that our great standard of living is directly related to the resources and friendship of indigenous people.
Thank you, councillor. I turn to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do have a motion moved by councillor Eckhart that the agenda for December 13th, special meeting of the Committee of the Hall be adopted as circulated.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Not seeing any. I call the vote, all in favor. Seeing none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So then moving down to number four, disclosure pecuniary interest or general nature thereof.
Thank you. After viewing the agenda, does any councillor have a pecuniary interest or general nature thereof to declare? Not seeing any. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So then we'll move to item number five, and our first one is 5.1. So we have a presentation from the Lincoln-Pellam Public Library, and I believe Julie Andrews, the chief executive officer, is joining us online to run us through that presentation. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Ms. Andrews, if you're there, you have the floor.
I am here. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor Junkin, and councillors and staff. Thank you so much for this opportunity to briefly speak about the library and our proposed budget for 2024. With me is Amy Gilmet, the Director of Customer Experience for LPPL and the Pellamaria Manager. The slide, please. So the Lincoln-Pellam Public Library Board began its first-ever strategic planning process this year. The results of our 2023 community survey, which was completed by over 625 people throughout the library catchment area, were used and analyzed to help inform that planning process. Recommendations were distilled, and we will be using those in planning for programming and services for the remainder of this term. And you can see there that our new mission is LPPL builds connections, and these great vision words apply to the way that we enrich lives in our communities. Next slide, please. So we will launch that new strategic plan in 2024. We've got many exciting activities planned, including renovations, as you know, and a new bookmobile coming. Our board made sure that when they were planning, they included the strategic goals of both the towns of Pellam and Lincoln and their strategic plans in our process. And then these four pillars emerged from that process and from our work, and they'll guide us for the remainder of the term. We're really happy with the strength of our vision. Slide, please. So there was an amazing report on the value of public libraries this year by the Canadian Urban Council. Some information from that report, which is entitled "Overdue: The Case for Canada's Public Libraries," is included here. So a central theme for Lincoln-Pellam Public Library is the idea of being a place to belong. And this list of library functions there in the green serves to illustrate the many things that the library is to all of our residents. This past year, for example, we've assisted our communities in many ways that are not traditionally seen as library activities, from youth mental health to connecting residents to social services. And then all of this list of things, you can see why the mission "Building Connections" resonated with our library board. Slide, please. In the 19 months since our Union Public Library was established, we've come a long way. By just the end of Q3 this year, we have delivered over 1,100 programs, welcomed over 180,000 people, and loaned more than 350,000 items. As the effects of the pandemic have eased, we've seen people return to our branches and engage numbers. Our board and staff, and most importantly, the communities, are thrilled with the services and programs that we've been providing. And all of the outreach and partnership efforts that have enriched our communities in many ways have also led to some wonderful support for our fundraising efforts. Just recently, our Giving Tuesday goal of $6,000 to provide no-cost programs for children and youth in 2024 was met with a total of over $19,000 in donations, which will enable us to do that for three years, and we're thrilled, obviously. Slide, please. So these are just some of the comments that we've received in our survey. There were many, there were hundreds. The overwhelming word that we heard was "community" and how the library builds and nurtures a sense of community for all ages in Lincoln and Pellam. Slide again, please. Recently, loneliness has been identified as a Canadian health crisis. It's hard to believe, but it's true. And public libraries, by creating places for people to meet and connect, are helping with the fight against damaging social isolation. Next slide, please. We've been mindful of trends and community needs in preparing this budget for 2024. Regarding revenue, we have asked for a 2% increase in our base operating budget. In addition, we're requesting a halftime FTE to coordinate the activities of our new bookmobile. It's currently on order. We're excited to get that vehicle sometime in early 2024 and begin the retrofit and outfitting that will turn it into a bookmobile. And next slide, please. Knowing that we're planning renovations at both our Ritten House and Faunt Hill branches, we will spend a little less on collection materials and processing next year. We'll continue to leverage our libraries in Niagara Cooperative to make collection purchases and reciprocal borrowing to ensure that our members still have the access to the widest possible selection of materials. You'll note we've also tightened our administrative spending despite increased insurance costs for 2024. We are ramping up for another wonderful year of activities in our branches, and the library provides critical supports in so many ways for so many in our communities: knowledge, culture, health, reconciliation, and, as we mentioned, belonging. We really appreciate the continued support of this council in helping us fulfill our mandate. And we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews, for that presentation. Before I turn it over to council, just want to congratulate you on being such a prominent organization within the community. Definitely, and you're definitely in touch with the grassroots of both communities and making sure that our libraries are staying viable even as we have Internet and what have you. You're adapting to change, and that's what's going to continue to make you a successful organization. So I wanted to just say that first. Thank you. I now open it up to any comments from council on the report. I'm not seeing any. I'll be thank you for your time, and I'll turn things over to the clerk. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we don't have a resolution at this time. We'll consider it when we're finished the presentations on the total budget process. So we'll move now to 5.2, which is the draft presentation by the Treasurer and the Deputy Treasurer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Treasury Department has the floor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council and staff and the public. We are very excited to be here today to present the 2024 operating budget. Let's see. It's not working, those buttons. It's going to keep you in suspense.
It's just down and up.
It's working now? Okay, so the agenda that we have for today, we're going to be looking at the 2024 operating revenues, expenses, the summary of the 2024 increases, the Meridian Community Centre, the library, we just heard from the library, the economic impact on the 2024 budget, and the 2024 proposed tax levy increase. Stop me anytime if there's a question. I'll be more than happy to answer it throughout the presentation. So the operating revenues, so the main operating revenues that we do have are the taxation levy, and the increase this year is 7.44%. This is the gross amount of the increase. As you're aware, there is an assessment growth that offsets the increase to the existing residents, and we'll talk about that in more detail. And there are other revenues in the Corporate Services Department. The biggest one, the biggest increase that we have in Corporate Services are in fees and other revenues, and that pertains to interest revenues and penalties on the account. The other areas, we have the Clerks Department, Fire and Public Works. So the biggest, there isn't a significant change from prior years in these areas. Recreation and culture and wellness. So as you're aware, we've had, you know, two and a half years of COVID from 2021 and then the first month in 2022. So this is the first year in 2023 that we've actually had a full year of activities with the Recreation Department, and 2024 will be the second year after COVID. So the numbers that you see there, you see an increase of 186,310 for the revenues. When we look at the Meridian Community Centre, we'll go into a little bit more detail about that budget, and we've done a deep dive into that budget because there were questions that were asked by the Audit Committee and also from other councillors as well. So we'll be able to talk about that when we get to that slide. And the other change that we have here is in the Community Plan and Development Department. As you're aware, from the financial reports throughout the year, there's been a decline in the building permits, and this is across the province, not just the town of Pellam. And so you'll see a slight decrease in the Plan and Development revenue of 65,000 and in the Building Department of 117,000. The Building Department is self-contained, so if the revenues goes down and we need additional revenue, it comes from their reserve. So the Building Department does not impact the town's tax levy. And this is just a summary here of the major revenues, and as you can see, that almost 83% of the total budget comes from the taxation revenue. And that's just in a pie format, just to show you that that's where all the revenue is coming from. Any questions on revenue? Okay. Expenditures. So this is the summary of the operating expenditures by department. You have all the details of the notes in your binder, and we'll go through the slide that actually breaks down what the categories are that have caused the increase for this year. So I'm not going to go through in detail by department here because I think it's easier if we go through it in this slide here. Hold on. This one here. So this is, this summary, this slide here shows you from last year's budget to this year's budget what the net changes and what's causing the tax levy increase. So I think it's a better way to look at where the increases are coming from. So the first one is the increase to the reserve transfers and capital expenditure funding. So this is 342,500. So we really looked at the reserves and what's needed, and we looked at the reserve and reserve fund policy and the minimum targets, and this is the amount that's needed in order to stay in line with the reserve policy. The next couple lines relates to salaries and positions. So there were some new positions that were approved throughout the year in 2023, and there've been some staff increases with regards to QP and the non-unionized staff have the same increase as the QP agreement. And also, there's been additional increases in the benefits as well. The only new position that's being brought forward in the budget process is for the grant writer to go from part-time to the full-time position. The next line for 96,000 is an additional two days in 2024. 2024 has a leap year, so that causes an additional day, and then just the way the calendar falls. So it's something that's new for this year. Council approved part-time pay grid enhancements for the town to be a living wage employer, and that's about a $20,000 increase. Volunteer firefighter points, this relates to increase in legislative training, and that's $25,000 increase. The cost of benefits is almost $170,000. That is Green Shield and other benefits WSIB. There was a contribution from the Human Capacity Reserve to help offset some of the increases of 40,000. We already had 160,000 in the budget, so $200,000 of that reserve is helping to offset some of the increases. There was an increase in cost in beautification roads, winter control, and fleet due to growth, inflation, increased service level requests, and the aging capital assets, and that's about 43,000. And utility increased hydro and gas, about 18,000. Good news story, streetlight hydro savings from the LED conversions. This is a really good story of $80,500 of savings. We had savings last year of about $65,000. So the Phase 2 of the LED projects will be done in the early part of January, and so we will be able to realize those benefits. Council approved the odor monitoring for 25,000. Increase in the insurance costs, as you're aware, with the last council meeting that we had, there's been, this is the full insurance amount, and whatever we don't use in the budget will go into the insurance reserve that we are setting up. Increase in material supplies, postage, and other items, 109,000. So before I change the slide, are there any questions on this slide?
Counsel Olson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The accrual for the 96,000, there is no reserve to cover that, is there? I'm thinking of maybe the Human Capacity Reserve.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Human Capacity Reserve is being, we are using the Human Capacity Reserve to offset some of the other increases. So we don't have it specified to, it's all staff-related, so it's not specific to a particular person or increase, it's just part of all the salary amount. So we are sort of using that as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, looking at the 2023 budget, last year, we did, we did $540,000 worth of increase in staff last year, and I see now we're doing 707. You know, I think this might be the year where we have to say that we're staffed up now, and we shouldn't be adding anything for next year because this is starting to get to be a pretty large number. That's a million, million and a quarter over two years, and that's built right in and won't go away, so just make that point.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. Part of that increase pertains to the council approval of the step grid that the staff have, so that's built in, and that was approved a couple of years ago. And then it's just the average increase, no, it's just the increase that's been approved of 3.25. And then there were some additional positions last year, and they're rolling in to the full-time positions now. But it's only a part-time position going to full-time, which is the grant writer, that that position itself pays for itself. It's more than paid for itself with the revenue that it generates. So there's an offset there with the grant revenue that we're receiving. It's not showing up there what the grant savings is because we don't put the grants on there until we realize the grants. But what I could say right now, just from having the grant writer part-time since April, we've received over $300,000 in grants. So that more than paid for her position. And also, right now, there is about $22 million of grants out there that we're waiting to hear from that we've just finished applying. So that's something that we would not have been able to do without that position.
Okay, thank you. Councillor?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm not arguing whether these are not authorized because we authorize all these things, and we did that knowingly, and I'm just pointing out the fact that we probably should be, we hope we're at the end of expansion and be able to serve the town with what we got because I don't see a future for continuing these types of increases. So.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Any other comments or questions at this point? Not seeing any. Madame Treasurer?
Yep. The next one is the Library Board, increase of 38,000. Increase in recreation costs due to enhanced services and to generate additional revenue of 138,000, and this is offset by recreation revenue increase of 111,000. Small decrease in debenture interest and principal payments, decrease in legal costs as the town solicitor is taking on more of the work on behalf of the town. We're using less and less of legal counsel, external legal counsel. And so decrease, there's some decrease in provincial grants. The net impact decrease in planning and development revenue was 65,000. Increase in supplemental revenue of 100,000. This number here is a very difficult one to predict. We don't want to go too high because we don't know how much we are going to be receiving. And then when we do receive additional revenue like we have this year, then it becomes a windfall to the town. But it is a number that is not that easy to predict. Increase in communities in bloom, this is something that council has approved of 30,000. Increase in penalties and interest revenue, this is an interest on the revenue side of 520,000, and then just other revenues of 30,000. So the total net increase is $1,350,000. So are there any questions?
Okay, thank you. I'll turn to council, and I see councillor Nessneck.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Actually, this goes back up to the volunteer firefighter points that is related to increased legislation training. I didn't know if you're going to go through that later with the, about having to spend $25,000 due to provincial training. So it's mandated provincial training. So is there any conversation with the province about them covering the cost of that mandated training? Like, I don't see why a town should have to pay for mandated training that's coming down from up above. Is that something that we can take forward to when we speak to the province?
I'll turn to the Treasurer, or should I go to the CAO?
CAO.
That probably would have been a good conversation for us to have at Roma, but AMO in August is our next good opportunity to make that case. Certainly, we're not alone. I would be surprised if other Niagara municipalities don't want to join in us in having that kind of conversation.
Councillor?
Yes, thank you. I think that would be a worthwhile endeavor to, like, say, you know, you're mandating us, so you need to pay for it from the province. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Eckert?
Just in relation to that, having been through most of my adult life with mandated training by either the federal or provincial government, don't hold your breath. They mandate it, but it's up to us. So it's not right, but if you're successful, I'm sure there'll be a lot of municipalities that will love you to the end of time.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions or comments on the presentation? Not seeing any.
Okay, so the next slide is the 2024 net tax levy increase. So as we've seen on the first slide, the tax levy is going up 7.44% gross. The assessment growth this year is high at 3.16, which brings the actual net increase to 4.28 of that amount. Almost 1.89 pertains to capital increases to the reserves, and 2.39 is for the operating budget. So that's the recommended tax levy increase.
Okay, excellent. And again, we'll go, any questions on these numbers? Okay. Counsel Olson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess the comment I would make about this is four and a quarter. I was hoping for something like three and a quarter myself, so.
Well, maybe, maybe your wish will come soon.
You mean at the Christmas party tomorrow?
No, at this slide here, the Meridian Community Centre slide.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the Community Centre budget that we have here, and this is the revenue. As I mentioned, that we have been, when we did this budget in the summer, we were conservative because, as I mentioned, we are two and a half years, we just came out of COVID, and we weren't sure how this year was going to roll out. So since then, staff, we sat down and looked at where we are today, and we feel that we are comfortable to increase the revenue by $94,000. So that's not in the budget right now. So that's something that we're proposing to increase the revenue lines by 94,000. With regards to the expenses, we did a deep dive on all the major changes of the expenses, and we can't find any savings in the expenses. They're actually, the budget is very, very, very close to what's happening in 2023. So if we do increase the revenue by 94,000, that means that the tax levy impact to the residents is 3.78% as opposed to 4.28%. Is that a little bit better, Counsel Olson?
I will accept that, thank you.
Any other comments at this time? I'll just say that this was a pleasant surprise to get down under the 4%, especially when inflation for the last year is bouncing 3.8, 4.5, what have you. So this is very good news that we could bring it down to four. Thanks, staff, for taking another look and coming up with this additional number.
And also, we are also looking at all of the activities at the Community Centre, and there'll be a report coming to council in Q1. You know, just looking at different options, how can we maximize the utilization of that space and increase revenue? So that's something that the staff has been working on, and we'll be very excited to come back to council and to brainstorm some ideas. I mean, we've got a phenomenal facility. I don't think anyone ever could imagine the success of that building. I mean, when Vicky said that, what, two weeks ago, you had 12,000 people on a weekend, that's just something that is just incredible. And saying that, I mean, when there's 12,000 people in two days, just think of all the extra things that the facility needs to maintain, you know, and service 12,000 people, just from, you know, the toiletries, the garbage that has to go out, the cleaning of the floors. I mean, that all adds up. So we're going to be looking at how do we, you know, really, really maximize the space utilization at the M-C. Obviously, it's in great demand, and it's, I remember the fellow that came here from ORFA that said it's the jewel of here from Orfa that said, it's the jewel of the province, that community center. So, you know, let's let's take advantage of that.
Okay, yep. Oh, I see, if I may, Counselor Wink has wanted to join us. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, through you. Just a comment about the breakdown of the increase. And there's quite a bit extra going towards reserves. We had fulsome discussion in the audit and finance committee regarding this. And the non non counselors on on the committee would have liked to seen an increase, a further increase in the reserves, not a not a decrease. So just the reserves are are need to be funded. Our reserves are declining somewhat, and we need to build them back up. So it's important that we contribute more towards our reserves going forward. So just a comment on on the audit committee.
Great. So if I may, Counselor Wink, not putting you on the spot, but I guess I am putting you on the spot. As a member of the audit committee, but also being a member of this council, are you are you satisfied with the amount that we are putting in reserves?
I would like to see more. But I also have have my counselor hat on, too, because I brought it up in in audit committee that I I wasn't a big fan of the 4.28% increase and like to seen it down. It's a very pleasant surprise that Ms. Quinlan Murphy has brought forward to say that the tax increase is going to be, I believe it was 3.78%. So similar to Counselor Olson, I'm quite pleased to see that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I'll go back to Counsel Olson, also a member of the audit committee and a member of this council. Any additional comments that you would like to make as we as concerning the amount that this council is indeed putting into reserves?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I know that I believe that the there's an excess from the investment or the interest that we've earned this year, and it's going to be like a one-time charge, I suppose, one-time benefit, I should say. And that's going to go toward the the short-term debt. I believe that's the plan. So if we get if we get through this and those savings get applied to that, we could come out of the out of the year, I understand, with a zero balance in bank and debt in this, short-term indebtedness. So that's a that's a huge step.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Did I steal your son of thunder there?
That's the December 20th thunder, but that's good.
Okay, okay.
Turn to Counsel Nesnik.
Thank you. I just have two questions, one related to the two positions. So you've got a point two environmental person that you're hoping to hire, as well as increase the grant writers. So can you just talk a little bit about the benefits of having those two positions on staff? And, you know, it sounds as though we're pretty successful with a point five grant writer. So will we get double our money for a full-time grant writer?
So so through you, Mr. Mayor, right now, there is a lot of work that's being done. She's she's been working, like, not completely. We've had additional funds, like, started later. So she was actually working, like, some, like, more than just half the time because we had additional dollars, but also because the demand was so huge. Like, some of these grants, the $19 million grant that was submitted for the storm, the storm ponds, the stormwater, took a lot of time. So there was additional time on her part. So she hasn't been working completely at part-time, but she's still within the budget that we had in the 2023 budget.
Gotcha.
But there's a lot of work. And there's a lot of research. I mean, that's part of it, too, that I have never seen so many grants that she's going out and looking for them. Counselor Hildebrand, you know, asked me, is there a grant for a stormwater pond? I said, I don't know. But I said, I'll I'll tell Bryle, you start looking for it. And this is where it gets exciting, because there's so much out there, but you just have to go out there and and look for it. And you need someone dedicated. It can't be the communicator, communication coordinator to do that, because then she can't do her job.
Okay, thank you. And then what about the point two environmental that we're just going to share with the town of Lincoln?
The C A O wants to talk about the climate change coordinator. I know that we had a position that was funded. I'll start off, a position that was funded three years ago by the FCM grant, and we had that position for two years. And then after that, the grant money finished, and then we never replaced it. But there was a lot of good work that was done, and then it stopped.
And let's hear from the C A O.
I certainly agree with the treasurer's assessment. We did have two caliber, high caliber individuals in a position that no longer exists. And and they got us to the point where we created a climate adaptation sort of strategy. And then the position became vacant and has remained so. And really, the value of this position is to have a champion at the table, albeit one day a week. But we don't have a champion, an environmental champion at the table, even one day a week. And we have this excellent plan, and we've pulled some of the strings from it. But you don't have a dedicated environmental resource or 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 staff person here on payroll at present. And I would say, if you looked at 2023, I think there's a lot of reason to be really proud about the charging, the town's first charging stations anywhere. But they happen to be on town lands at the MCC and here at Town Hall, and available for everyone to use, and two different generations of chargers, so that regardless of the type of vehicle you have, you know, and we got that thing done through grants, through the grant writer, by the by. But we find ourselves, when you don't have a dedicated champion to something, there are demands. What I can say from my municipal career is that there are demands across the spectrum. Everyone in the community wants and needs and has reasonable expectations of service and support. And you get pulled in all directions. And one of the the challenges to leading and serving well at a municipal level is to be able to sort of focus on a couple of and and be able ultimately to deliver product and service. And having this person that one day a week will be enough, we think, to just help get us over the hump for more accomplishments on the what I'll call the environmental file, for lack of a better term. Part of it'll be climate change, part of it'll be green initiative, part of it'll be green policy. But but just having a policy on the, like, we have this great plan, but no one exactly pushing to integrate it. And we just kind of need that that help to just be a little more greener and to just have sort of green baked into the DNA. It's in the strategic plan properly. And we do have a few things to show over the last year. I'm very proud of those chargers, but charging stations. But but we know there can be more and better. And here we have a way to take just a fraction, 20% of the cost of an employee, but get the champion. And so we hope that's the value proposition. And then based on our size, I don't think it's full-time work here at the town of Pelham on our size and at our capacity. But we do see the the need as being real. And Lincoln's has a very similar thought process. And so between us, we think there's a way to share a resource and get someone good and dedic- and it's not a short-term job where the candidates are just going to leave us very quickly. Between us, we offer full-time, proper, gainful employment with all that comes with that, and a chance to have someone build their own personal life while helping two communities hit our green goals. So we hope that that provides appropriate value to the community. We believe it does, which is why we've endorsed it in the budget, and we hope you feel the same way.
Thank you, Mr. C A O. Counselor.
Great. Thank you for that clarification and explanation makes perfect sense. So just one more question. Are you going into further detail with the at the about the MCC? Or would this be the time when you talked about not being able to reduce the expenditures at all? A question.
Well, yeah, definitely, you can talk, you can ask the question.
Okay, so it's just really under contract services. So that, you know, is a 66% increase from last year's budget number. So is that anticipated funds that are already being need to be spent? Or is that just a number that you're you've you're thinking about and hoping to come in under that? It just seems like such a huge change.
To the Director of Recreation, Ms. Van Raven, Joy.
Through you, Mayor, excuse me. The contracted services also, it entails many different aspects of the operation. It's not just what you would think of the building. It's also all of the programming. So for instance, you would have all of the instructors, if they're on contract, or all of the the busing for the camps, because it's ran out of the anything. If the revenues go into the facility, then the expenses need to as well. And a lot of times, when you see contracted services or materials and supplies, you know, you think of the building, you're thinking about toilet paper or or, you know. But it's the whole picture. So, you know, when it comes to busing for the camps, every day, we're using transportation. And of course, those costs have gone up. But also, our revenues, I think we hit 205,000 in revenues for the camp. So we expect, based on our programming, as well as the actual contracted services for the building, that that is the actual figure that we would require.
So if I can add to that, if you look at the 2022 actuals, it was at 229,000. And right now, the actuals for 2023 is at 297,000. So that the 273,000 is actually lower than what we're experiencing right now in 2023.
Counselor.
Okay, so thank you for the explanation. I'm not sure if I'm really still happy with that amount of contract services, or whether that should be some maybe split out somewhat to cover.
Yeah, and in 2024, we are going to break it out a bit more. So we'll break out the programming with the facility's contracted services. So it's clear. So as you see the program revenue increasing, and then you see that the contracted services increasing, you'll be able to see the match.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for my understanding. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. If I can just touch on the fact of the climate person, great to see that, again, Pelham is reaching out and connecting with another area municipality. We've done that now with our legal representation. We share that with the municipality. Obviously, the big one is the library. We've we've reached out and partnered with Lincoln on this great facility now, and all they are doing. And now here we are committing to another municipality on the environmental person. So it's great to see that as a town, we are continuing to find ways to connect with our neighbors, to bring in outside help, but share it with with another municipality. So I'm glad to see staff is, that is, of course, if council passes this tonight. I'm hoping they will. And I'm just, it's great to see that we continue to reach out and look at other alternatives as we continue to go forward with this. That's a great, great thing. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Go to Counsel Olson.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple of things in the budget, and Counselor Nesnik asked a great question there about contracted services and and materials and supplies. If you add all these these items up, from the individual departments, they come to materials and supplies comes to over $3 million. And contracted services come, they approach $3 million. So you're looking at about $6 million worth of spending. And, you know, I have difficulty imagining how there isn't a bit of savings in there, like maybe 4% across the board, or maybe even a freeze on where we were last year. Because, for example, and to make to make an absurd point here, the members of council, our budget for materials and supplies is $36,000. And I certainly don't see $36,000 worth of supplies in use for us here. So maybe that's not a good example. But it goes on to say that human resources, their 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 material supplies went up 18 or 28% over over time compounded rate. There's a lot, and the whole thing is up by 5.15%. So I'm just just requesting that perhaps we should have a review of all the expenses that go into members of council because there's there's one here that says shared administrative overhead, materials and supplies, $666,000. I don't even, I have no idea what that means. Maybe it's, maybe that's a disclosure item.
Thank you, Counselor.
So that materials and supplies line that's there, it's a grouping of different accounts that group into that. So with regards to, I guess what we can do, I mean, we can look at the materials and supplies, and we can give you a summary of what makes up the amounts, and which departments, and what's in the materials and supplies. We can definitely do that.
Okay.
Would that be something that?
Yes, I'd be interested in that.
So contracted services as well?
Yep, contracted services. There's, you know, there are things like, there's a thing called Meridian Facility Consolidated. What's in that account, that that line there?
So the Meridian Community Center Consolidated is the report that we bring to council that all the activities happening at the Meridian Community Center is showing up in that one report. So it's just a consolidation of activity. And so we can go back and look at material supplies and contracted services by the various departments and and help you help everyone understand what makes up those numbers. Because right now, when you're looking at it in the budget, they are consolidated with a few different lines. So that's something that we definitely can do for better understanding.
But, you know, the 2% savings would be something like, I guess, probably, I'm going to say $120,000 if we took 2% out of all of them. 4%, 240,000. So it kind of looks like those are the kind of kind of size of numbers. These are massive numbers, really, for for what we're doing here, I think.
Right.
Would that be possible to take a look at that?
Yeah, we could definitely look at that. I think it's because of, it's just, as I mentioned, a category that has quite a few different accounts in there. But we'll definitely look into that. And I think that will help you understand what makes up those numbers. Because
See, that that doesn't really give me very much meaning in the thing, because the real meaning for me is there's six million bucks we're spending. And surely, there's some, there's some savings that can be realized in a close look at it. And maybe we've got to change our procedures. Because if we keep growing at the rate of like, 5% and 3% for over with contract services, pretty soon they'll double. Won't be that long before they double. Within 10 years, we'll be paying, you know, twice as much money for these things.
So I'm just, you know, as an example of material and supplies, you know, in the public works department, we have our salt. Our salt is there. So as we keep adding roads, then we have to increase the amount of salt that we need to purchase. So that's a pretty big number for the winter maintenance, and it's included in that number that you looked at. So definitely, we can do that, and we can report back to council on that.
I appreciate that. I think, you know, just just by giving attention to each one of these items, and somebody has to prove that and say that this is what we're going to spend. My own experience has been that that's that's good for the 6% in the first first six months. And then after that, it's all the way downhill. Every year, it's 6%. So if you could look at that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. C A O, any comments?
I think what a fruitful conversation is around council's preferences and expectations for how we present you data. Two slides back are the opening slide, first two slides were, you don't need to flip them, but were us just explaining what the what the service level changes are. Essentially, we brought you a flat budget. Where the only things we're doing differently, we're proposing doing differently in 2024 that we didn't do in 2023 is $25,000 for an odor consultant, for a potential committee to address odor issues at Redcan, and a 0.2 environmental employee and a 0.5 staff member of the communications department. Those are the only changes. So that's how that that first page presents. We can provide you, we can go all the way down into showing how much money we spend on pens and toilet paper in this building, what level of detail you like, we can provide you with. we can provide you with all the detail. It's, you're entitled to everything. It's really about how do you want the budget process to go? And what, what level of involvement do you want to see and have? So, I mean, it's, we can break salaries and benefits out by department, by division, down to offices. Try to avoid getting to the level of identifiable individuals, but the point is, we could go that far if we had to. Do you like this level of detail? Do you want more detail? We typically, I hope, you recall last year's process? How is this different from last year? We highlight at the start, here's where the differences are, so that you have easy things, if you don't like them, to say, no, I don't support that. I don't want that enhanced service, or I don't think that provides value to the taxpayer. Within the specifics, but here's the thing, in a, in a four percent inflation world, we brought you a budget that's under four percent, and in fact, it's not so easy, notwithstanding Counsel Olson's assertion, the contrary. You can't just find four percent, or two percent, or six percent. If we cut you with a two percent cut, and inflation is four, that's six percent. And I don't, we don't have any direction from you to change our service level. This is the budget that keeps the service the same, except for those three things that we have flagged, twenty-five thousand dollars for odor consulting, a zero point two and a zero point five staff member. Those are the only changes. Now, whether, if you wish for next year, if you wish for this year, you don't ever have to pass a budget, you pass the budget when you are comfortable. We hope you are comfortable. We have complied with what we understood your preferences and expectations were for this year, which is why we provide this level of detail. But if you would like a greater level of detail, we have multiple accountants in the room who are enormously capable of doing that. See, they're both nodding, like, we will give you as much or as little as you wish. The conversation you have as a group is, if this is not enough detail, and you want, we can go down just one level. We could go down two levels, we could go down three. When you sit with them, I mean, I try to keep my focus when we go down five levels in the spreadsheet, but the point is, we can go down five levels in the spreadsheet. And I don't say that flippantly. Our goal is to provide you and the public with a level of information that we think you want and need. And if we're missing the boat, have that discussion amongst yourselves as soon as I stop talking. We want more, no, I'm comfortable with this, I want just a little bit more, whatever that is. And that's what we'll aim for. But the numbers aren't derived that flippantly, and we highlight, our current process is we simply highlight what we change. And everything else, frankly, this year in particular, is inflationary. So if that is a comfortable way, that is a relatively simple, straightforward way we think is easier for the public to understand, but we can give you far more detail. And we'll be pleased to, no one's resisting. I think you should discuss amongst yourselves if this is an appropriate level or not appropriate level. And then that's, we will or won't change, but I don't want us to simply, you're, of course, you're also welcome to come in offline and sit with us, and we'll walk you through the, at the detailed level. That's a different, that's a, also a valid way to go forward. So I just commend that, because from the staff position, we're trying to give you the product, which is to say the budget, in the way that we think is right for you and the community. And if we've missed the mark, let us know, and we'll, we'll change that for next year. Or we'll change it this year, if, if that's your preference. But really, it's basically, it's a flat budget with three changes. A zero point two, a zero point five, and twenty-five thousand dollars for odor testing. And otherwise, they're inflationary things. That's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Mr. CAO. First of all, go ahead, Counsel, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All that aside, the fact is that there, you know, we're here on behalf of the vulnerable taxpayer too. And we have a process here, and I'm very satisfied with the process. You know, what's it taken? It's close to an hour we spent on our budget, a huge budget like this. So I'm fine with this, and I, I took advantage of the opportunity to talk to staff. You know, we know what we want. There's only one number that really matters to the taxpayer, and we, we got to get to that one. And that's, we're getting there. I mean, I don't propose to go through everything and question everything, because I find that the reports are fine, and they're getting better every year. I've looked at four, four or five budgets now, and they're getting better every year. So I have no complaints.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Counselor. Counselor Niznik.
Yes, so thank you, and I agree. I, budget is another area where I'm still learning and gaining confidence in as I read them. So thank you for the overview, and then thank you for the details that, that go further. So I'm comfortable with the level that we've been given. I think the message that I'd like to, to send out to you and your departments, and I, I know you're already very cognizant of it, and, but, and I think this might be where Counsel Olson also might be just trying to get the message across, that if there is an area that you can all, I assume you're always conscious of the expenses that you're doing. And if you can avoid or reduce waste, because there is waste. So I'll just give an example of camps. Being an educator, I know that with construction paper, for instance, when you purchase construction paper, and a kid wants to make a heart out of a piece of paper, they take a whole brand new piece of paper. So if, if they're conscious of that and say, whoa, we're going to cut the little pieces of paper into little small squares, so that you're only using this instead of an entire nine by twelve piece of paper, to avoid waste. And that's where I think if we can just have all the departments very conscious of, how can we do better with less, or at least the same service, with a conscious thought in the back of our head, how to reduce, reuse, and recycle? Those, I think, would help maybe with that bottom budget line of expenses. So that's all I would like to, to put out there for everyone to be, to hear and be conscious of as they do their expenses.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kerr.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the, the efforts that go into this. This is not a simple thing to put together. I, I kind of look at, at trends and how things move. And it's been very hard with the pandemic, because it just creates havoc for, for all of us. And when I looked at the Meridian Community Center Consolidated budget, I saw a trend from a deficit of one point two million to one point two five, to one point four six, to the upcoming one of almost two million dollars. Those are significant increases every year of, of basically where our revenues are not keeping up with our expenses. And it's probably time that we take a very hard look, and it may not be overly popular, but at the, the revenue side of things, of what's being charged, and how much is being charged, and taking maybe, as I say, it's, it's an unpopular situation, but you can't have a half a million dollar shortfall increase every year, go on forever, because you're really getting yourself deeper. And it's a classic line, you're just going deeper and deeper in debt. Because I have no expectation that the Meridian Center is ever supposed to pay for itself. Like, I mean, that's, community centers, I've never seen an arena in all of, all of Ontario or Canada that's ever broken even, anywhere, in recognizing, you know, there are certain things you, you invest in, but there may be opportunities that I think we may have to take a hard look at, at our revenue stream to partially offset some of this stuff that, that, and as I say, it, it may be, it's always unpopular when you have to raise fees for anything. And, and you consider who the fees are being raised for, et cetera, et cetera. But you, you kind of made a, a comment, which was true, when they talk about it being a jewel in the peninsula. This is a facility that's used by the entire peninsula. It's not used just by the Towne of Pelham ratepayers. But it's the Towne of Pelham ratepayers that pay for it. And maybe it's time we have to take a look at, at that, being, and maybe, maybe, maybe this may hit the news that I'm being a bad person, but when it's coming out of my pocket, and, and I have to support it, and it's out of my direct taxes, yet a large number of, of other people are benefiting from it, who don't pay anything into that fundamental core operation of it. It's something that I think we have to look at, and I just, that's all, I, I understand the point of waste and everything else, but it's also time to take a look at the, the realities of a subsidized entity.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Oh, there we go, Counsel Wink.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to the treasurer or the CAO, I'm fine with the level of, of detail that's being provided here. I don't want to get into a situation where we're counting paperclips. But just so, so counsel knows, what was the original budget increase that you were looking at on, at your first swipe on the operating budget? And I, I hazard to say that our number where we're sitting now is considerably less than what was looked at initially. And staff has gone through that budget and reduced where they could. So can you just kind of throw, throw that initial number out to us?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, it was eleven percent we started with.
Yes, wow.
That was, that was the initial increase, and then from there, now we're at three point seven eight percent.
Thank you for that.
So, thank you for that. And so it just goes to show that staff is looking at this very diligently. To bring it down from eleven to three point seven eight is considerable work. And it's a demonstration how they've gone through the fine points of, of the budget to reduce it as, as far as they can go. So I applaud staff for, for bringing it down from eleven down to where we are today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Wink. I also like to point out, before I go to Counsel Eckert, I also like to point out that we have a very open staff, very transparent staff. And anytime an individual counselor wants to meet with either the treasurer or any of the directors, CAO, we all know that the doors are open. So as you, we've had these binders for quite a while, weeks, obviously. And, and we all had opportunities that if we saw something that, well, that looks a little crazy, or a little out of whack, I'd like to discuss that further. We, we all know that the doors are open, and we can always discuss way more details if that is what an individual counsel, counsel wants. So just want to point out that the staff here is, whether it be Treasury, Recreation, or the CAO, the door is always open on those offices. And always, staff is always willing to communicate their numbers with the, with any counselor. I turn to Counsel Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with Counsel Olson and Wink, I am also a member of the Budget Committee. And perhaps it gives me a little bit of an advantage, because I see more of this, and I hear the discussions, and take part in the discussions at those meetings as well. So along with Counsel Wink, I'm pleased with the way this is presented to us. It, it highlights areas where it's easy to see where a question needs to be asked. And then we can dive deeper in with your response. And I have not yet to hear a bad response to any of the questions. You have the knowledge, you put it out there. It's not hidden anywhere. So I'm very pleased with this. There is a couple of points that have been made, especially by Counsel Niznik, where something may be pulled out a little bit more, so it makes it clear. And I think that's a great process. So I'm, I'm pleased with everything so far. And especially the decrease from eleven percent. And welcome, Counselor Hildebrand.
So Counsel Eckert, you'll have to forgive me. I apologize that I had forgotten that you sat on the Audit Committee. I certainly would have asked your opinion when I was talking. Okay, thank you for that. I will turn now to our newly arrived Counselor, Counselor Hildebrand. I'm sure you have some items that you would like to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure where you are on the, on the presentation, so I'll.
Well, I believe the presentations are finished.
No, no, it's not finished. So the next one was the library budget, which was presented by the Library Board. And now we have the Deputy Treasurer that's going to just talk about the economic impact on the 2024.
Okay, so Counselor Hildebrand, do you want to question, do you want to wait till all of these presentations are done, and then I guess we'll have to accommodate you and go back somewhat? We do, we're, we're on a timeline here, but whatever. What's your preference?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, continue on through.
Okay, and then we'll come back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just to update Counsel Hildebrand, we did find an additional ninety-four thousand community center revenue. So now the tax levy is at three point seven eight percent. So you, you missed that exciting news.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my goal is three to three and a half, but three point seven eight was better than it's on the paper.
Okay, I'm going to pass it over to the Deputy Treasurer, Usama.
Deputy Treasurer, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Teresa, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I feel like you guys have already talked about all the exciting stuff. So I will try to move along quickly. As Teresa mentioned, we'll be looking at economic impact. So what you guys saw was the final product. Now we're going to go back a little bit to look at some of the items that impact what we present to you, and some of the items that we consider. So some of the challenges for 2024, as we were preparing the budget, you know, this has been discussed already. Inflation is the number one challenge. Everything, the cost of everything's gone up, as we all know. Even though inflation has gone down from where it was last year, it is still above the Bank of Canada's target of two percent. And we're seeing that in the items that we're purchasing, you know, in, in, in QP negotiations and everything else. So year-over-year inflation as of October 2023 is still about three percent. We've seen minimum wage go up about almost seven percent as of October 1st, 2023. You've heard that we've had increase in staffing costs due to QP collective agreement negotiations, salary grid movements, and the additional cost of the town being a living wage employer. We've also had cost of benefits increase, so CPP EI contributions always go up every year. The yearly maximum pensionable earnings change every year. And in addition to that, we've had an increase to provide the health benefits. So altogether, the benefit costs are up about sixteen percent. And then some of the other items, you know, we have labor shortages, which sometimes lead to longer vacancies, you know, positions being vacant for a longer period of time, challenges with retention and recruitment, which can, you know, put pressures on the budget and increase the cost of doing business. And lastly, this is again, something that we're hoping to address with that shared position. We've seen lately that the impacts of climate change, you know, through severe weather, has increased some of our costs for storm-related cleanup, be it winter cleanup, or, you know, we had a windstorm a couple of years ago that had significant cleanup costs. So some of that stuff, we're, you know, considering as we're preparing the budgets. So the next few slides, I'm going to reference the BMA Municipal Studies. So for anybody who isn't aware, BMA Management Consulting is a consulting firm that prepares the annual municipal studies, about six hundred pages. It looks at over five, or, sorry, not five hundred, one hundred and fifty-five municipalities across Ontario. And it looks at certain key performance indicators and metrics to compare the various different municipalities. So these figures are all from the 2023 BMA study, which is still in the draft format that they've published. So looking at Pelham's 2023 average household income, we are the highest in the region at just under one hundred and forty-seven thousand, which is significantly above both the average and the mean for the Niagara region. The average is about one hundred and thirteen, and the, sorry, not the mean, the median is about one hundred and eight. Next, we're looking at the property tax in relation to the household income. So the first table shows that Pelham was in the mid-category. So they have three categories in, in the report, low, mid, or high. So we are in the mid-category when you look at the property taxes for an average residential property in relation to the average household income. So it's fifty-five ninety-three, and then if you divide that by the average household income, it's about three point eight percent. Again, we're in the mid-category. Next table at the bottom looks at the total municipal burden. So what an average home would pay would be the property tax bill as well as the water bill. I know we haven't brought forward the water budget, but this is just draft numbers from their study. So if you look at the total municipal burden, i.e. tax and water costs that a resident will pay, Pelham was in the high category based on dollar amount. However, we were low based, oh, sorry, we were in the mid-category, which is, if you look at it, on a percentage of household income. So the Niagara average was about fifty-eight hundred or five point two percent. So that's the average property tax plus the water bill in the Niagara region. If you look at Pelham, the total dollar amount was sixty-seven hundred, but then the percentage-wise, it was four point six percent. So as I mentioned, percentage is lower, dollar, we're on a little bit of a higher side. This slide looks at the two different types of residentials or residences, looking at the two-story home on the left-hand side and the detached bungalow on the right-hand side. So looking at the average. So looking at the average property tax for a two-story home, Pelham's about fourth or fifth down. For a two-story home, we are approximately 5,496, which is in the high category. However, majority of the Niagara municipalities are also in the high category for that metric. And even though we're in high category, we're still slightly below the Niagara average. Now, looking at the detached bungalow category, we're actually one of the lower ones within the region. So we're third from the top, just in that list, which is again in the mid category at 3950, average taxes for a detached bungalow and which is again lower than the Niagara average and the median. So this table right here shows the property assessments and how they're broken down by different property classes. The top table shows the unweighted assessment and the bottom table shows the weighted assessment. So I just want to focus on the bottom table and just to show, Pelham's obviously at the top, highlighted in yellow. Eighty-nine percent of our assessment is coming from the residential property class. Why that's important is because different property classes pay a different rate. So for instance, if you have more of a commercial or industrial, you know, based assessment is divided more towards industrial or commercial, you would have much more relief on the residential side. So as an example, as a contrast, if you look at Niagara Falls, only about 59 percent of their assessment is tied to residential and they have a big portion coming from commercial base. So that provides them the added relief on the residential side. Looking at the property taxes for Pelham, they're impacted by three main factors. Number one, assessment value, which is impacted, sorry, which is determined by NPAC. Number two is the tax rate. So town sets its own tax rate, but we have no control over the tax rate. That is set by the other two levels of government, so the region and the province for education. And number three, property class, which is what I talked about in the previous slide. So farmland was taxed at lower than residential. Commercial industrial is taxed at higher than residential. So if you look at one of the two pie charts I have on the right, the top one, for 2023, the average assessed value of 377,000 within the town would pay a tax bill of about $5,466. But out of that amount, Pelham only keeps $2,204. The rest of the money goes to the other two levels of the government for the services that they provide, you know, province for the education and the region for waste management and transit. And then just looking at the bottom pie, pie chart there, it just kind of breaks it down on a per-dollar basis. So in other words, for every dollar that we collect in property taxes, we only keep 40 cents. Forty-nine cents goes to the region and 11 cents goes to the province. So this is our property tax rate schedule from 2023. Again, just highlighting the different property classes. I won't go into too much detail, but just want to give a brief example. So if you look at the tax ratio columns and, you know, for example, if you have a property that has, say, 100,000 assessed value and if it's residential versus commercial, the commercial property, if it's occupied class, the tax ratio is 1.73 percent. So the same assessed 100,000 will pay 73.4 percent more in property taxes if it's classified as commercial versus residential. So this is where, you know, us being 90 percent, almost 90 percent residential, more of the burden is on the residential base. So this slide is a little bit dated now in light of some of the discussion we had earlier. But essentially, what was proposed was in 2023, the average resident paid about $2,204. A 4.28 percent tax levy increase would have been $94, which would have brought it to $2,928. And this was the breakdown of the different items that will, that make up the $94. Again, you know, staffing cost and pay increases, cost of living adjustments and net of organizational changes being the biggest one. Second biggest one is $24 for the increase to the reserve transfers. Then you've got other things such as $13 for the cost of supplies, materials. As I mentioned, inflation, you know, we look at the contracts and the things we need to buy and what the cost would be in the upcoming year. Increased cost for fuel, insurance, utilities, cost of benefits, and then just the, the $2 increase for the library board. So again, we will update that information. So it won't be the $94 increase, it would be slightly less because if, if it is passed. And that brings us to the recommendation that the committee receive the 2024 operating budget presentation by the treasurer and the deputy treasurer for information. And that committee recommend to council to approve the 2024 operating budget at their meeting scheduled for December 20th, 2023.
All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments on the presentation? Councillor Kerr.
You may want to correct your slide 32.
Oh, what did I have on there?
You, you had a $700 increase, not a $94 increase. It went from 2,204 to 2,928. It should have gone from 2,204 to 2,200.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. I will, I will update that.
Anybody watching in the audience may choke at a $700 when you run the map.
I transpose the, yeah, sorry, I should have got that, yeah.
Kevin just saved the $700.
There we go.
Thank you, Santa.
Any other questions or comments on the presentation? No? Okay, do you have one? Oh, okay, councillor Hildebrand.
I apologize for coming late. I thought I was going to be early for 5:30. If it wasn't for Shelley sending, sending me a text when I just got home, I said, oh, no. Just got in the door and I had to turn around and come. Anyway, thank you so much for taking, giving me the opportunity to share a few things. I'm sure some of the things have been talked about in detail, but there's, there's one area I want to talk about is operating revenues. And it's operating revenues for the MCC. I participate in several programs there. And I think the fact is that the Pelham residents in general, each resident pays about, in my bookkeeping work world, it's about 50, 55 bucks each a year just to keep the doors open. That's, that's my number. The non-residents don't pay any part of that. Yet they get the same privileges coming to our facility at the same rate as us. Welland, for instance, even at the senior centre, charges a non-resident rate. And I know there's other communities that charge non-resident rate. When it comes to rate schedule, I'd like that to be considered because I think whether they pay a buck or two extra, I don't think it impacts them very much. But when you're starting to get the number of residents coming through the door as we get presently, I think it could have a big impact in our revenue generation. And, and I think it's a fair way to go because the classes and the things I participate in, it seems as though like 30 percent of the people are from out of town and they enjoy being there. I mean, they, they're becoming part of us. They come from Lincoln, they come from Thurl, they come from Welland. We appreciate that. But I think for them to be charged a few extra dollars here every time they come, because when you look at the pickleball course, like in the mornings, you got 24 people out there. And that's, that's, you know, when you look at that per person, like whether they charge a dollar or two extra, every dollar or two extra makes a big deal. The other area I wanted to just comment was on the materials, supplies and contract services. Probably they've gone over this already. I suspect some of my fellow councillors, like councillor Olson, have addressed that. So I probably don't have to beat that horse anymore. It's, it's probably.
The contract services.
The contract service, it's, it's, it's all gone down the road already. So that's.
So Bob, watch the video.
I'll, I'll do that. Just, just one, one thing on the notes. The odor monitoring at 25K, I think that's not really odor monitoring. I think that's the cost of the expert, I suspect, right? It's, it's not the odor monitor.
Good. Allocated to the.
I understand. Thank you. Those are the highlights because if you consider any other Chuck Marks and pink notes I've got on pages, I'm sure the rest of my competent fellow councillors have addressed that appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you for the calls notes of the Hildebrand report. Thank you, Bob. Sorry that you, whatever, that you missed out on the first part of the meeting, but it is. Anyway, yeah, thank you. Any other, where are we right now? Any other comments, questions before I turn to the clerk? And yeah, we are running out. I don't see any other comments. I'll turn to the clerk, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So without any other comments from members of council, I do have a resolution put forward by councillor Kerr that the committee receive the library presentation from the chief executive officer presented earlier as well as the 2024 operating budget presentation from the treasurer and the deputy treasurer for information. And that the committee recommend to council to approve the 2024 operating budget as amended at their next scheduled meeting for December 20th, 2023.
Okay, thank you. One last time, any other comments or questions on any other presentations made tonight? Not seen any. I will call the vote. All those in favor? And I don't see anyone opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that concludes our agenda materials for this special committee of the hall. I do have a motion moved by councillor Olson that this special meeting be adjourned.
Thanks, thank you. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.